All right, good evening. The time is now six thirty and we'll call this meeting of the DeSoto ISD Board of Trustees from February twenty-seventh to order. Item one A calls for us to extend the welcome. I've just extended that welcome to you. One B calls for invocation from Pastor Jocie Rashid, Crossroads Covenant Church in DeSoto. Two C calls for our pledge students, which come to us from DeSoto High School. One D is our district mission statement, which will be read into our hearing by Trustee Hooper this evening. We all stand for a word of prayer.
Because usually if I was at home, they'd tell me to push mute. I travel a lot now, and if I was in Kenya, I would greet you with habarigani. If I was in Congo, I would greet you with bote. And if I was in Cameroon, a very simple bonjour would do. But here we are tonight, all of God's children, and I greet you with peace. Peace from God. Would you bow your heads and pray with me? Father, we give you thanks for this wonderful evening, thanking you for the privilege of education, of educators, and for those who are stimulated to involve themselves in this process, which will produce many more young men and women striving to not only make our city, our state, but even our nation, great. We ask God for your presence, for your wisdom. We ask God that you will bless us and guide us and keep us. Most of all, you will unify us. You will let our agenda be secondary to your agenda. As you do this, we promise to give you all the praise and the glory which you are due. We ask this in the precious name of Jesus Christ, our Savior. Amen.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Our pledge students this evening, Xavier Newman is a twelfth grader at DeSoto High School. His parents are Leon and Michelle Brigham. Xavier enjoys learning about different events that have occurred in history, so he always enjoys going to his history classes. After graduation, Xavier will be attending Baylor University and majoring in special education. Dariel Johnson is a twelfth grade student at DeSoto High School. Her parent is Ms. Dietra Johnson. Dariel loves reading and writing, so it is only befitting that her favorite class is English. After graduation, Dariel will be attending Soul Ross State University and majoring in kinesiology with a minor in education.
DeSoto ISD will prepare each student academically and socially to become a problem solver and productive citizen for a twenty-first century global society.
Thank you, Trustee Hooper, for the mission statement. Thank you to our students from DeSoto High School for leading us in the pledges, and thank you to Pastor Rashid of the Crossroads Covenant Church for leading us in our invocation. Item one E calls for our emergency statement. I'll read that into your hearing at this time. DeSoto ISD takes the safety of our students and employees, guests, very seriously, including those of you with us tonight. Emergency situations such as a fire, please exit the building using one of the marked exits unless directed otherwise. Should we experience inclement weather such as a tornado, we'll ask all guests to move quickly from the interior of the building away from all doors and windows. We'll monitor the situation at all times, as well as coordinate with local emergency responders regarding when the situation has passed. Thank you. Item one F calls for us to establish a quorum. We do have a quorum, and so we're ready for action. Item one G and one H, one G being celebrations. We covered all of those last month, or excuse me, earlier this month, which brings us to item one H, which is our special recognitions. And I believe we've covered those as well. So that brings us to I, which is our highlighted school, DeSoto High School.
Transferring to a new school in the middle of the second semester is a little risky. I will have to adjust to new teachers, new students, and try to make new friends. This is going to be a lot of transitioning for me to do. However, I think it won't be too bad after all. From what I've heard, DeSoto seems to be full of amazing students with an abundance of school pride, and I certainly can't blame them because there are a lot of things to be proud of about this school. Besides the fact that the football and basketball team are state champs, you know, no biggie, they have many impressive programs that I could consider joining, just to name a few. I've read about collegiate programs, BPA, National Arms Society, and of course, many more. I'm getting more and more eager to learn what else DeSoto has in store for me, and I am ready to find out.
Hey, did you want to take us to DeSoto High School? Come on, let's go.
High School's ghost city. Here, we have the opportunity to learn about lots of scholarships so we can go to college for free and be successful.
This is the academy. Early college and collegiate and the nursing part of the school. I love it. As you can see, so college is ready. I want to go to Texas. Have you seen their cheer uniforms?
And I want to go to OU. Oklahoma is the best.
One of the classes we're coming. Let's see what they're doing.
And I've also took a part in the collegiate program because that program is a program for students that think that they are able to go to college and they're college-ready, and they'll get two free years of college out of the way. So I think that's a good opportunity for all the students that feel like they're ready and responsible enough to take on the challenge.
After exploring the Collegiate Academy, my tour guides showed me around to other parts of the school. It really is an amazing school that has extraordinary things about it, and I think the most interesting thing of all is the fact that even though it is competitive in sports, it is also solely focused on academics. This shows that the people in charge of this district cares about the kids in their schools because we are indeed the future. Without good education, the world would not be able to take steps forward and progress. I will surely be eroding into DeSoto High School.
All right, thank you so much for that. That was definitely a new and innovative way to present, and I believe I saw our principal, Mrs. Owens McGowan. Okay, there she is, back there. Thank you for all that you do for students each and every day. That brings us to item one J, which is our proclamations. We do have one proclamation under J one, which is DeSoto ISD celebrates Texas public schools. Trustee Moncrief.
Whereas, the students of the state's public schools hold the promise of a successful future in their capable hands, and whereas, the DeSoto Independent School District provides the tools, framework, and solid foundation that is vital toward the future of our children, and whereas, the dedicated efforts of parents, educators, and community leaders will provide the necessary support and strength to our public schools, providing our children a quality education, and whereas, students will attain a higher level of achievement because of our commitment to excellence and focus on continued improvement in our public schools. And therefore, we, the Board of Trustees of DeSoto Independent School District, do hereby proclaim March twenty seventeen as the month to celebrate Texas public schools. We urge all citizens to support the theme, "The Power of Public," by taking the time to visit local schools to share the impact public education has had for them and their community.
Thank you, Trustee Moncrief. We definitely do want to, as that line read, encourage everyone to visit a campus and see what your public school, particularly DeSoto ISD, is doing for our community, for our students. That takes a different meaning this year, that proclamation, with our new Secretary of Education and what they are considering in this legislative cycle session down in Austin. So we definitely want to encourage our community to be involved and see what our students are able to do day in and day out. Board, that brings us to item one K, which is citizens' participation. We do have need for that tonight, and so I'm going to read the rules for participation at this time. We've designated a portion of our meeting to hear from members of our community. This is not the forum for complaints. We have procedures for hearing complaints, and those must be exhausted before matters brought to the board. This is a posted public meeting of the board and not a meeting of the public. And according to what the Texas Open Meetings Act, all meetings are open to the public and media. The board may hear some matters in executive session, however, any decision must be performed in an open meeting. In addition, we are not permitted to discuss items not on the agenda. Nonposted items may be considered for a future meeting, and no presentation shall exceed five minutes, and delegations of five or more persons shall appoint one person to present their view. You are respectfully reminded to address the board, not the audience, during your presentation. Our first card comes from DeSoto's pastor, Dr. Marcus D. King of Community, or excuse me, DC Three. And I call him DeSoto's pastor because he's always engaged in many areas. Sir, if you don't mind, just step to the podium. We have your address for the record. You have five minutes, and your time will begin once you begin to speak.
Good afternoon, good evening to everyone, Superintendent President Sherman and all of wonderful board. Just glad to be here once again. I'm actually going to just set it up. This is a scholarship presentation, once again, to, our second year doing this, on behalf of Disciple Central Community Church. We presented a scholarship last year for five thousand dollars. And one of those scholarships, well, we do twenty thousand dollars of the scholarships for our church, and eleven thousand dollars blessed DeSoto students last year. Five thousand, which we gave to the district, and then six thousand, three thousand each that went to some wonderful students. One Taylor Pugh at our church, she joined, got, went through the school and got that one. And then Kirk Johnson. But the five thousand dollar one went to a wonderful student here at DeSoto, Nicole Keating, who attends University of Texas at Arlington. She's aspiring to be a teacher, and she signed a contract with DeSoto ISD, continued upon successful completion of her college certification. So it was this particular scholarship, the five thousand dollar one, tonight, we want to, once again, present. And also, I wanted to do something I didn't get a chance to do last year, was, it's named in honor of my father, who was a wonderful educator as well, but I wanted his beautiful bride, who he was with for forty-five-plus years before he transitioned to heaven, to read her statement tonight as she does the presentation.
President Sherman, I am proud to have this opportunity to present the Elmo King Scholarship to the DeSoto School Board. For the second year, Dr. King loved children and was always encouraging the youth to remain in school and to learn everything they could, in the books and about life. It also was initiated and practiced in the King home. The message conveyed at his numerous speaking engagements was, "Learn all you can while you can. Learn to obey the rules. One may agree, or not to agree, with the rules, but they were written for specific reasons, and for learning to respect authority. Learn to do the right thing, for it enables you to remain on a positive path to success, and to also beware of the negative paths that can cause failure and downfalls in your lives. Pursue your dreams, but most of all, dream big. Set goals for yourself. The possibilities are so great for you to attain and to reach these goals. A day without learning is a day wasted. Don't waste your days. Old man can't die and left no survivors. Developer can do attitude. This exemplifies his work in educating every child. This scholarship is a continuation of his legacy." Thank you.
And so, we present, this paper is not the real check, so you can't cast this right now. Yeah, it might bounce, but we'll give you the real check and present that to you, but if you would grace us and actually take a picture with my mother, I'm on enough pictures, so if you could, I'll take a picture with you.
Thank you to Dr. King, Ms. King, and the Disciple Community Fellowship right here in DeSoto. Thanks for investing in our next generation, our future scholars in college. Next, we have Mr. Tony Bradley. We have your address. If you don't mind, just step to the podium, and your five minutes will begin.
Good evening, Mr. President, Doctor, members of the board. My name is Tony Bradley. I'm the Mayor Pro Tem of the City of Glen Heights. I'm here tonight to thank DeSoto ISD for their response in the immediate aftermath of the tornado that hit our city. The mayor is currently out of state and couldn't be here, but he would like for me to make sure that I thank the Superintendent, Dr. Harris, the Assistant Superintendent, LaVetta Levels, the Principal of Moats Elementary, Wes Pittman, Director of Plant Services, Don Lester, and Program Corrections, Special Programs Coordinator, Mala Wilson. We don't have the certificates for those individuals tonight, but when the mayor gets back in state, he will sign those, and either I or the mayor will bring them here. But tonight, I want to recognize Dr. Harris for his leadership and being there for us in our time of need. I was out there that night, going door to door, and it was awesome that Moats doors were open for our citizens. And so I want to let you know that what you do matters and that you are doing a great job. I have two DeSoto High School grads, and I'm counting on more, okay? But, Doctor, if you would, please come forward, and let me present you with this plaque on behalf of the City of Glen Heights, to thank you and all the members of your team for what they've done for us. Thank you for your time. I do appreciate it.
Thank you so much, sir. Next, we have Mr. James D. Gaston III. If you don't mind, we have your address for the record. If you'll just step to the podium, and your five minutes will begin.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. I want to give a special shout-out to Mr. Hooper, my fellow Morehouse alum. Of course, I am here this evening by invite by Ms. Levels. What I want to do is extend an invitation to everyone here tonight to join the City of Glen Heights as we compete in the It's Time Texas Challenge. Ms. Levels has all the paperwork, basically, yep. In essence, what we're trying to do is compete against a number of other cities here in the state of Texas. Each particular person, if you sign up, the City of Glen Heights will receive one thousand points, and as you matriculate through your healthy eating, exercise, and things of that nature, the City of Glen Heights will continue to matriculate more points. The contests will end March thirty-first, so if you need any additional information, please give me a call. I will be happy to help you sign up. If you want to schedule an event, let me know. I'll be happy to help. And if I can get any superintendent to sign up and designate the City of Glen Heights, we will gain an additional points for that particular, for our particular city. What we're trying to do is score very high so that we can receive a grant for the City of Glen Heights as we move forward. If anybody has any questions, please do not hesitate to contact me. I am new to this area. I'm glad to be here. Thank you very much, James Gaston III.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Gaston. 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 Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. LaBord, is there any updates that you'd like to point out in these reports? These are standard reports that we present to the board, but would certainly entertain any highlights or...
Right. There, nothing, all highlights, no lowlights this month. We are on track on our January tax collections. As you can note, we're at eighty-seven percent, eighty-seven point eight percent, almost eighty-eight percent on our collections this year, as opposed to last year at eighty-seven. Our budgeted collections are exactly on track as well as if they were last year. We're expecting to be in the ninety-eight percentile on current-year levy, which is what we budgeted on our financial reports. Everything is normal. As our general fund, like we talked about last month, is ahead of our expenditures because this was our big tax collection month, and we will start not receiving the state funds as of this month, so that'll start getting closer together, but everything is on track. Our quarterly investment report, we're very excited to be able to, to report that we had an approximate yield on our investments this time of point nine, point six-nine percent. I know that's not as exciting as it could be, but it's very exciting to consider that this time last year, we were putting in point one seven and point one eight, so to be up to point six-nine. We've been able to move some of our, especially for our construction funds, out to longer terms, out to three, six months, and a year, so to really significantly increase the yields on those. And of course, all of our, we're outperforming the pools. The pools are performing at point four-four, and our investment portfolio is at point six-nine, and so we're significantly outperforming that, as we are U.S. Treasuries and U.S. Mutuals. So other than that, like I say, everything is good news, everything is on track, and I'll be glad to entertain any questions that you might have at this time.
Thank you, Ms. LaBord. These are our standard report items. We'll entertain any questions, comments, or discussion surrounding these items if there be any. Seeing and hearing none, that brings us on to item three D, which is employment, resignations, retirements. Dr. Harris.
Yes, Mr. President. We've included resignation, retirement, administrative professionals. I know there was one individual that was left off on last board meeting, Ms. Hayes, and Ms. Hayes is included in this report.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. Board, once again, this is a standard report, but we'll entertain questions, comments, discussion if there be any. Seeing and hearing none, that brings us to our item four, which is action items. We have no items to take action on tonight, which brings us to item five, discussions. Under discussion items, five A, we have naming of the new elementary facility. Dr. Harris.
Yes, Board, Mr. President, based on district policy, CW Local, the board is responsible for naming of facilities. The board may request that the superintendents submit names when in the opinion of the board, the process is advisable. The board should set a reasonable timetable for the naming of any facility. When the board is considered naming a new facility, the following process shall be followed. A facility may be named after a person or persons who have served the district or community, especially in service to children. A facility may be named after any state or national heroic figure. A nominee for honor in naming a facility must have made a significant contribution to society and/or education, and his or her name shall lend a prestige and status to an institution of learning. A facility may be named after any local residential or geographical area. It is requested that the board submit or direct the superintendent to submit possible names for the new elementary school currently under construction. We are needed this information due to the new facility needs to be named early to allow administration to apply for funding through ERATE and New Instruction Facilities Alotment NIFA, both of which require an official name, designation, and county/district organizational code. At this time, we're asking the board to consider and provide us with direction and how you'd like us proceed in naming of our new elementary school.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. Board, this is a discussion item. As you guys can recall, when we named the high school gymnasium, that was a name that the board came up with, after which we had a public hearing to hear from the public as it relates to the name selection that we made, and then after that public hearing, we took a vote and approved that the name changed. So this is a discussion around how we go about coming up with names or options for our new elementary, and so I'll give the floor to any questions, comments at this time. Trustee Hooper.
Yes, Mr. President. If the superintendent could just let us know what the time window looks like, so that, I know that that's the process that we use with the naming of the Chris Dyer Gymnasium, but just what the time window looks like.
Yeah, so we're, we need to, we have already been requested by the ERATE Funding, or USAC, that we present this information to them as we go out to secure funding for our infrastructure for the facility. And so we're hoping to be able to get direction from the board tonight as far as what the process will be for gathering those names, and then to bring back a name to the twenty-seventh or the March board meeting for the board to approve.
So, you know, because DeSoto is a community, you would always love to hear community recommendations. My question is, do we have the ability to get that message out quickly, as well as the infrastructure technology-wise?
as the infrastructure technology-wise to receive those names? And then, the time to turn around, if potentially by the meeting on the twenty-seventh, are the one, the... I'm, I'm confident that the March meeting will be fine, but if we were trying to turn it around as quickly as, um... Oh, it's both on the twenty-seventh, okay, we're good. I'm looking at this month's calendar, too. So, do we have enough time to turn that around and to be able to, I guess, do the necessary research potentially, um, that might be associated with some of those community recommendations? Obviously, you know, you want to make sure that there's no negative things associated with some of the recommendations, um, that might, you know, shed a negative light on the community. So, as long as, you know, there's enough time to go through that process, I think that we make it as community-involved as possible.
What we're asking for is, is guidance. What was done in the past is that it was submitted to the committees, uh, the community actually submitted names, and then those names went to the building committee, uh, which is my recommendation that we use a district improvement committee, or, and maybe the district advisory committee, so that we have, uh, a larger number of people to vet those names and then bring, and then get direction from the Board as to whether or not you all would like us to bring one name back, three names, and you pick from that name. We just kind of really need, uh, guidance. As far as the amount of time that it takes to do the work, we need it done, so it will be the priority, uh, that we vet those names.
Trustee Moncrief.
I'm just concerned that whatever this committee is, really looks like a good cross-section of the community. I appreciate people always showing up and giving their input, but I think oftentimes we don't hear from a good enough cross-section of the community, and that is what concerns me about turning it over to one of these committees, 'cause I just don't think we get a true representation of the community. Is there some way we can do it, maybe through schools?
Yeah, so there's, we can do a survey. Another option would be, uh, again, to get the names submitted by the committee, and then, uh, the community, I'm sorry, and then narrow those names down, and then have the community to vote, uh, through technology. Uh, we would do a call-out to the district, making sure that the parents and the community stakeholders are aware at the ti, that the window, that we would open up this voting, uh, process, and then provide that information back to the Board. There's a, the, a gamut of ways that we can make it happen, we just kind of, uh, need you all to give us direction as to what you would like to see it, the process look like.
I would, I'm sorry, process also, maybe we could, uh, do a competition with the schools, get the kids involved. Good way for them to learn who some people are that are notable, and to also, you know, task each school with, um, helping, uh, coming up with a name. You know, make it fun for the kids, it's a way to involve them, have them take ownership of what we're doing here.
Thank you, Trustee Moncrief. Trustee Daniel.
It's my understanding that this could also be a geographical area. Where is this school geographically, like a description of north, south, east, west?
It's, it's, yeah, it's, it's at Meadow Creek Park, right over off of, uh, UHL and Parkerville Road.
Okay, UHL and Parkerville. Okay, thank you.
Which would be southeast, right.
Okay. Well, I think if we're gonna use students or community members or whatever, they also need to know that it could be a geographic area, it doesn't have to be a person's name.
Trustee Daniel. So, so here are my thoughts, 'cause we've, we've thrown out ideas, right? Um, and, and, um, so where we are right now, what it sounds like, uh, Trustee Hooper, you've expressed, uh, the need that I hope is felt, felt by all of us, that we involve and engage the community, and the community has ample time to give their feedback and input, um, and that also, we don't slow the process, uh, of getting the project complete. And, and I hear Trustee Moncrief to say, um, that this process needs to be, um, it needs to be kid-friendly, right? In the sense that we have kids engaged, but, uh, more importantly, the whole community, that we have a great cross-section, to use your word, of, uh, or representation of our community we serve. Now, I hear Trustee Daniel saying, let's make sure that everyone knows that you can name it, uh, directionally, or, or towards a community name as well. Uh, all of those are great, um, great points, um, of conversation. Does anyone have a thought of how that looks? And I hear technology. And Board, this is, this is where we will be able to give our input and guidance, uh, to administration who's asking for it. Uh, we have our new app now, uh, we can send out push notifications, uh, parents that are signed up in that portal get that right away. Um, I know a question I would have is, what does that look like on the backend as far as technology, right? We did our, um, our uniform surveys, and we got a ton of response, uh, compared to what we would normally get, right? Uh, so that was effective, um, but how did that look on the backend? Maybe you can speak of any potential issues we might run into this time around, seeing that that was very clear to give options, uh, this would be soliciting names first, uh, and then tallying those names, so...
I think on the backside, it's pretty transparent. Basically, whatever we build in is what we're gonna get out. So, the more information that we're gathering from people, the more information we can get, but we can definitely put those parameters up on top, so that people are seeing whether it's a geographical location, if it's to be named after a person, if there's any parameters you want to put in, whether it's a person who's alive still or not, um, those sorts of things, we can put it on the front side, so that everything we're getting on the backside can include why that person, if it's a person. They would, uh, want to be selected, and then, as we mentioned, it's something that we could definitely vet on our side of it, um, to get that recommendation, or we could do it so that there could be a vote on the other side.
Okay, and, and let me, uh, a quick follow-up to that, and Trustee Hooper, I see your, uh, your, your mic lit there. As far as timeline, right? So, we're, right now, we're looking at a month, just about. Putting those recommendations out, let's say we open that up for a week and a half, two weeks, right? How much time, and I know computers are awesome, right? But how much time would it take for us to, to, um, data mine, right? To clear all those names, to come up with a clear picture of what we have, and then send that back out to get feedback? Is there any potential delay?
That data mine section in the middle is really only going to take us a couple of days.
Okay.
Eleven years in the district, when we've opened new buildings, we end up with seven to ten names, um, and maybe more this time, I'm not saying it's not, but, I mean, we typically end up with a seven to ten name pool, so it would not take very long to vet those.
Thank you. Trustee Hooper.
Yeah, so, to the point, um, of making sure that we reach as many sectors, um, how do we, I just want to make sure that we're conscious of how we engage those audiences that may not have, uh, students in the district, who may not be a part of our call-outs. And the reason I say that is, I know everybody gets the city lights, um, and everybody gets the stuff with their water bill. My question is, what is the timeframe? How does that potentially mesh with the city in terms of where they are on us getting that information, that we could probably include it in those, uh, things that will touch as many people, at least inviting them into the process? The other thing is, how do we also engage, um, some of those citizens that are also in Glen Heights, um, who are part of, you know, our geographic area, but who may not be, um, parents of students that are currently in the district? Just as ways to think on how do we touch as many people? And there, I mean, it doesn't have to be an answer to that.
Well, just on that one note, um, the city lights is something that we've been working with the City of DeSoto particularly on. Uh, we actually have now a DeSoto IC section on the bottom page, um, of one, of one of those pages. So, we actually have now a dedicated part of the city lights that goes out to every, um, resident of the City of DeSoto. Uh, we've started some great conversations with Glen Heights, and we're gonna continue to make sure, you know, we're reaching out to them as well.
So, I guess the timing of that is when the city lights go out, that's, that's...
That's my question.
Yeah. So, I mean, this, this, obviously, this is important to the Board, so what we would do, we will also consider what would be the cost to do a mail-out, we might be able to take advantage of doing a front and backside, where we can also include some other information as well, and so we'll just, uh, at least give them information where they can actually go and submit a name, so, um, you know, it's, it's a costly adventure when we do that, but it may be worth the, uh, the opportunity for involvement.
Yeah, we can do an actual, uh, postal mail-out to every postal customer, that's actually about a third the cost of a first-class piece.
Right. But, but just see, see, if you could contact the city either tomorrow, and just see where they are with the March city lights, and then when does that get distributed? And if we could use that avenue, I know at least we'll touch as many people that have water. So, yeah.
Yeah, see, that's what I'm saying. That's why I think the mail-out, we'll, we'll work on a, um, a postcard to go out.
Yeah, and kind of, Dr. Harris's, um, conversation just now was, um, as if we do the mailer, um, it would need to have DeSoto ISD branding on it, to have something other than, uh, naming a school, so we're getting as much bang for the buck as we can. Um, and it is that time of year, uh, where we, um, start sending things and targeting students, uh, to make sure they're coming back for next year. So, so, maybe you guys can answer a question as far as timeframe, right? So, I kind of threw out that overarching, just random days, right? But maybe you can talk to us about how long it'd take to send that, or to set up the, um, the portal for people to go in and put in their, uh, input, uh, and then what that looks like coming back, and then Board, uh, be thinking, uh, about how we're gonna vet those names, and not necessarily vet them. I guess what I'm saying is, if we get, if the feedback comes back and there are seven names, right, seven different names, geographical, living person, whatever the case may be, it's gonna be very easy for us to make a determination, but if we get fifty names back, uh, we will more than likely want some kind of, uh, checkpoint, some kind of committee in place, uh, to narrow that list down of fifty to a manageable number for us to consider. Uh, so be thinking about that, but maybe, Dr. Lamonge, yeah, you can talk to timeframe. Um, if we were to say, let's put the survey out, how long would that take to get it out, get it up, and then what could we expect as far as timeline before we come back on March twenty-seventh?
So, if we have guidance, clear guidance tonight, it's not a problem getting the survey up and out tomorrow, um, that's not an issue. What I am concerned about in light of the time is the student, uh, participation, uh, and so if we, um, if, if that is indeed what the Board wants to do, then I just see that we need to go to April tenth, uh, Board meeting. It's not what is in the best interest of us as we, as we, um, think about the fact that we're trying to get these funds secured, um, but it's not a, a, like, it's not gonna kill the project if we go to the tenth. That way, we, you know, the Board doesn't feel rushed, you have an opportunity to see what, what we get on the twenty-seventh Board meeting, and then we can bring it back to you all for the tenth, uh, for voting, if that be your preference. But to give students an opportunity to research, um, which was what Ms. Moncrief, uh, suggested, would require, uh, next week, and there's testing going on, so we, we don't know how that's gonna fit into the schedules of the schools, so you have to give them time to actually fit that in. And so, if that is what we're going to do, then that would be my recommendation, not so much about the survey, it's not a problem. But if we're going and, in fact, have the students to participate and, and give their input, then we definitely need to give them, uh, the time necessary to be able to participate on that level.
To, talk to us, Trustee Moncrief responded, I don't have a problem with that. Talk to us about, um, talk to us about timeline, um, if, if, and so, March twenty-seventh to April tenth, right? It seems like a few days, um, but, and, and I'm asking, in this question, you know, anyone can answer, obviously, but financially, what impact, if any, will that have on us in the long run? Because at the end of the day, school's gonna start, and we expect that school to be ready to go, um, next year, right?
Yeah, sure, it's not about necessarily, um, the impact that we would think, what it is, is the quicker we can get our application in, uh, the quicker it can, it can be approved, and we know what funding, uh, the United States government is going to give us. And so, if, for every day that we're delayed, uh, that's a delay, a delay on the application process, and then, in turn, them actually, um, uh, looking at our, our application and deciding how much funds, uh, they're going to appropriate. Either way it goes, we've got to put that infrastructure over there, we've got to have technology at the school, we've got to have Wi-Fi, but we would love it if the government could help us pay for that, and so that is what we're striving for, um, in that process.
Absolutely, and so, and so, I'm, I'm thinking of it from a grant application standpoint, right? If the federal government, and, and go with me on that, if the federal government's saying we're gonna allocate X amount of dollars, first come, first served, once that money's gone, it's gone. So, are we limiting our opportunity to get those funds, or are we sure that a few days is not gonna make a difference? I guess that's what I'm getting at.
Do you think ten days, Mr. LaBoard, would make a difference? You can never tell, huh? Yeah. Okay.
All right, very well, so what we have on the table, um, Board, unless there's other input, uh, on that subject, right? We can get the kids involved and push this back to an April tenth date. What that does, it, it does provide an opportunity on that March twenty-seventh meeting, uh, to have a discussion around those names that have come forward, and so, Board, that'll give us an extra amount of time to consider, uh, debate and discuss the proposed names as well, uh, those options.
May I have a clarification question, please? Would you like, would the Board like for us to bring all the names, and then at that time, you'll decide whether or not we should bring those names to a committee, or...
That's a great question, so, so let's summarize where we are, right? So, and I'm sorry to be redundant. Uh, so, uh, so basically, what we said right now is we want to have a survey, we want students involved, we want students engaged. Now, we're talking about checkpoint as far as, uh, the committee, remember Trustee Moncrief's point earlier about, uh, making sure this committee, whoever, uh, narrows that list down, uh, had, had, is a good representation of, um, of our constituents out there, okay? Very well, so, uh, let's talk committee now. Who do we want to, uh, vet those names? Don't all speak at once. So, maybe talk to us about the committees we have in place. So, in naming the schools, we know we have the SHAC committee, right? Which we, which, we, we know we have that committee, we know we have our, uh, we, so, talk to us about committees, what those make-ups are, and, and things that...
Sure, I think our most comprehensive committee is gonna be the District Improvement Committee, uh, and this is the type of responsibility that they are, are, um, charged to take on, if you will. Uh, they are voted, uh, the campus representatives are typically voted on, um, and sent to the district level by the campus, uh, and then you've got community, uh, members that serve on that committee as well. Uh, it's probably gonna be the committee with the largest number of people as well. Then you've got the District Advisory Committee, uh, usually those, um, that committee is, um, added to through the, um, coffee and conversations, and just, uh, people making recommendations, um, and people who want to be active in the community, they're given an opportunity to participate on the District Advisory Committee in an, an attempt to help us, uh, to think about what is going on. I think that the problem could be with that is I believe we might have some Board members on the District Advisory Committee, so that might, I mean, that's up to you all, uh, with the understanding that the, this, your, your regulation does say that the Board can just choose a name, uh, so you don't have to have the committee. And then, uh, those are the largest, too. Oh, and then you all just, you just, um, created a District of Innovation Committee, uh, but I believe that it only has two teachers, uh, from each of you all represented, or one teacher, one community person, uh, and then seven members that were appointed then by the superintendent, and that would be probably about fifteen, uh, plus about twenty-something people, I guess, on that particular committee. Uh, so as far as committees are concerned, of course, we've got all types of smaller committees, but, again, the larger one would be...
All right, so Board, you've heard kind of a breakdown of the committees and their makeup, thoughts surrounding that? Go ahead, Doctor Harris.
Once again, it's also up to the Board. The Board could choose to have a workshop where they sort through all of the names as well.
So, 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 um, yeah, okay.
I don't mind.
So, now we're talking about polling for dates to workshop this, uh, workshop those options that come through. And if, obviously, you know, if the Board, if that's your pleasure, then we can definitely do that. Uh, we've done this multiple ways, um, we've, you know, we've outright named it ourselves and heard from the public hearing at that point, um, so I don't think having a workshop for us to cycle through the names is gonna be any different than that, um, in that regard, but... Trustee Dan.
First of all, Mr. President, I apologize for being late, um, but in the line of work that I do, I do have to stop by the house and take a shower before I come in here, so... Or if I don't, y'all could smell me by the time I get out of the car, so... But if you could, if the Board does not mind if you take about sixty seconds, I'm, I'm, I'm sitting here trying to gather where we are, and I've heard naming the school, then I've heard committees, and then, now I'm hearing... And I've heard naming the school, then I've heard committees, and now, now I'm hearing you talking about a workshop, but I'm confused. So if you can just take about sixty seconds, just tell me where we are.
Yes, sir, absolutely. So we're talking about the naming of the school. Um, basically, we started out talking about having something, uh, to vote on and consider on the March twenty seventh meeting. Uh, we're now talking about the April tenth meeting, having a name to vote and consider. And so we've talked about getting public input, uh, from not only our residents, uh, in DeSoto and Glen Heights, but also our students, uh, as well. And so, uh, there will be a survey that's sent out. Uh, we'll also have an opportunity for students to engage and submit names. Um, once those names are collected, um, at that date, uh, that's where we are now, is discussing, will those names that have been selected by the commu- community, however many those names are, if it's one, if it's a hundred, whatever that is, uh, if those names will go to a committee, uh, for vetting and for consideration, and they send us a few names to consider to vote on? Or, uh, will the board have a workshop? And as opposed to those names going to the committee, that come to the board, we discuss, uh, we consider, we vet, uh, and then on April tenth, take action on a selected name.
Okay. Uh, either way is fine with me. If, if, if there's a hundred names submitted and the committee, um, narrows it down to five, and they submit that to the, submit those to us, that's fine. I would say I still would like to see those other names. And the reason I say that is it is the board's responsibility to name the school and to take the action. So those five names may be five great people. Um, but there may be that one name and the other ninety-five that just really is the right name. You, you understand what I'm saying? So, and it's not that I want to undermine, undermine any committee, but we want, again, what's best for this community. So, um, you know, we, we may wanna name it the Jerry Hall Elementary School, and those five names are just not clicking for us. So, um, those, those are just my thoughts, so.
Yes, sir.
And thank you for the, bringing me up to date.
Trustee Hooper.
So, sort of along the lines of, of Trustee, uh, Moncrief and, I believe, Trustee Gant. I, I mean, I'm, I'm fine either way. I mean, I would just like to see the full list regardless. Just because there might be some really great names on that list, um, that kind of fit, you know, kind of what the mindset of the district is in terms of where we're trying to go. And that somewhere on the list that didn't get submitted in the five might be, you know, the actual legitimate name for that specific place, so.
Okay, very well.
But, but I think that, just like in the board briefing, that we allow the community, to the point that Trustee Daniel, understand that it can be geographical location, it can be after a person, and, you know, just making sure that, almost similar to what you provided us, in terms, which is consistent with our board policy. You know, just where the parameters are of where, where, uh, they can kind of frame their suggestions.
Thank you. Trustee Daniel.
If we wanna see the whole list, which I think we all do, then I don't see that we need a committee. We have the submitted names, and it can come to the board. We're gonna make the decision anyway. So I think we're wasting time if we have committees.
No, we're, that's what we're saying, is to forego that. We're saying forego the committee. The board's gonna make, let the board just have a workshop, and you can see all the names.
Right.
All right, so, so let's do this. Um, i- if there's no further comments or, or question, discussion around that topic, um, I'm sorry, Trustee Gant.
Real quick, to give you a little bit of history, uh, I was so blessed to be sitting here with the last two schools that were built and was able to participate, um, in those actions. As we all know, DeSoto in the past has chosen to name schools by the area, geographic area they sit in, which is predominantly what most of our schools are named after. With Woodridge, we tried to stay with that same thought process. Um, and with McAllen, um, it was, it was just the right person that everybody felt. It was probably ten minutes of discussion. And, um, I thought it should be named for, uh, our current mayor, and everybody agreed, and that was it, so. Um, but I, I welcome the input of this community because it is their school. They're paying for it. Their kids are attending it. It's their school. So, uh, we definitely, uh, I, I definitely welcome their input, but I just wanted to kind of give you an idea of where, I was able to participate in the last two schools. I'm not sure what happened before that, but, um, it's, it's never been, it hadn't been an issue, uh, in the past. So, um, I like the idea of getting the, the community's input and, uh, going from there.
Thank you so much, Mr. Gant. So let's, let's talk, um, unless there's anyone else. Let's talk timelines. Um, so, uh, um, excuse me, Dr. Lamonge, I drew a blank. Dr. Lamonge, you mentioned, you mentioned needing additional time to have students engage. Um, perhaps you, you guys can tell us what day that would look like, a firm date, um, that we could expect to see those go out. Um, and then that'll help us with the, or the workshop timeframe.
Everything will go out tomorrow.
Everything will be done tomorrow.
And the community. We won't leave until we're done.
Gotcha.
Um, and then we will spend, I need it done, doc. And then we will spend, um, uh, we will try to make sure that we engage the campuses, uh, the next week. Um, we'll send them reminders this week and try to engage them next week in the event that we have not received, um, an adequate number of responses, uh, from the campuses. Uh, we will also, uh, provide in the board update, um, update information, uh, to the board. Not this Friday's update, but the next Friday's update.
Okay, very well. Um, I'm sorry, Trustee Hall.
Uh, one comment. Since all of us are out in the community every day, uh, and the board certainly wants the community to be involved, uh, if you could give us something that we can talk to people about, pass it out or whatever, I think it would help us, if that's possible there.
All right, so, so you guys send that out tomorrow. It, it's two weeks a fair time to give everyone to turn those in, submit those names, we feel. Okay, so two weeks, so that will put us, uh, the week of March, uh, March thirteenth, right? Which is spring break, so when we come back the twentieth, the week of the twentieth, um, we need to start talking about a workshop for us to go through those names. Uh, so Ms. Rand, whenever you send out a poll, uh, if you can poll the board for dates from March, uh, the week of March nineteenth, um, through, I mean, the first week in April, right? Cause the meeting would be on that tenth. So through April eighth. Um, board, if you guys can be prepared to give some days and times that we're available to do that. Um, I think it would be prudent that we also take this time, that even though we'll be talking about the naming of the school, we also take the opportunity to do a budget workshop of anything that might have changed. We knocked out two birds with one stone, is that fine? Absolutely. Okay, good. Uh, so we have a budget workshop at that time as well. Um, board, we, um, at that point, we'll have had a ton of time, uh, to look through that budget, specifically that eleven percent of the budget, which we can make changes and alter, uh, and so that, without impacting the classroom, impacting our students. Uh, let me be very clear with that. Uh, so we can come back with some ideas, some thoughts about that budget, and some changes we can potentially make, uh, because we do have, uh, some numbers we've gotta make sure fall in line. Um, so Ms. Rand, if you can get that out to us ASAP, uh, tomorrow, we expect tho- that information to go out. And, uh, board, are there any further comments, questions, discussions on this? Seeing and hearing none, uh, we will move on from item five A, which is the naming of the new elementary. Uh, we have no need of executive session tonight, which brings us to item seven, which is our comments from the board. Let's start ladies first, cause I can't remember which direction we went. So, so Trustee, go.
Hello, everyone. Um, I guess the main thing that I've done this last week was I, uh, attended both, boys and girls playoff basketball, uh, games, and sorry to say, both teams are out of the playoffs now, so. And this last weekend was a baseball tournament. I caught a few of those games. And then Sunday night, all of us were, uh, in attendance to, with the Choir's concert for their London tour. And that was the most amazing group of children, uh, that I heard singing that night, uh, since last night. I guess that was last night, wasn't it? And, um, they're awesome, and I wish them well, and prayers for a safe trip, so that they all come back. I was also, let me say this, at the table, we talked to Ms. Dawson, and I did not realize the children are receiving college credit, uh, while they are on tour, so that is an awesome, they do a few hours online in their tour, and they get a college class done. So I think that's the most awesome thing that she arranged for that to happen. So, um, I'm just really, I know that we put a lot of money into that trip, and I think it's well worth it. And I applaud everybody that was involved in that, so.
Thank you so much, Trustee Gold. Trustee Daniel.
All right, I have to second everything that, uh, Trustee Gold said. The concert was wonderful. Our kids are gonna do us proud. Uh, they are gonna be a blessing to everyone who hears them, and they are going to be blessed also. And the college credit part of it is awesome, just really awesome. Uh, the church where they performed was beautiful, and I was totally impressed.
Thank you, Trustee Daniel. Trustee Moncrief.
I had the pleasure this weekend of attending the Destination Imagination Competition, um, that our elementary school students participated in. I wanna thank, uh, Ms. Mala Wilson and all of the GT teachers, as well as the other teachers and the parents who were involved in helping put the teams together. Guys, this competition is just phenomenal. It is a competition that's geared towards creative thinking, critical thinking skills. And Ruby Young, kids from Ruby Young, managed to place fourth out of twenty-eight schools in their category. First time out the gate doing a competition like this. They did an excellent job, and they kept asking, well, where is DeSoto? Well, by the time the kids finished, they were just in awe of, um, their presentation. And I'm just glad that we are doing more things like this for our kids. It's always about exposure, it's always about experience, and just being able to see our kids perform in a different context when put up against, there were students from everywhere. When I looked at that list, we beat some private schools. I was excited to see that, um, because public schools matter. I'm, you know, I'm a big fan of public schools, and I'm an even bigger fan of DeSoto. One, one child said, and this was priceless, he said, "My mom made me do this competition, and I did not wanna do it." But you know what, Ms. Moncrief, when I go home, I'm gonna tell her thank you because I had such a good time doing this competition. And so it's just, it's, it's things like that, and, and the teachers who put in their time to work with the kids after school to do it, the parents who showed up and helped out, um, that's just, that's just great. What I wanna challenge us to do, Dr., Ms. Levels and Dr. Lamonge, because this competition involves working together as a team, building, thinking outside the box, I wanna see, or I see kids, also, they can enter this competition as well next year. I wanna see us take it up to the middle school level, and you could also do this competition all the way up through high school. So I'd like to see us get involved in that, in that process as well, and again, just creating more experiences, um, and exposure for our kids. And also, the choir was phenomenal. I never get tired of hearing them. I am so proud of them, and I know they're gonna make us proud in London.
So Trustee Moncrief is pretty nice. I would've called the private schools out by name because one of them is here in DeSoto that we beat. But we also had another school, um, just saying, you spend that money, but, uh, we had another school, Moats.
Moats. Moats, uh, finished in eleventh place in that category also, again, just, or first time doing this and to even place in the competition was just, was phenomenal. Again, I'm, I'm just glad all of our elementary schools got in there and did it. And this is just something that we can grow and something that we can do even more with.
Thank you, Trustee Moncrief. Trustee Gant.
Had an opportunity to, first of all, let me go back to our last meeting. The presentation that all of those students put on that night was absolutely phenomenal, absolutely phenomenal. It was just amazing, you know, that, that they were, are that engaged. And looking at those performances, I mean, these kids are going places. I mean, it was just absolutely phenomenal. And I like the idea that we're teaching black history. You know, when I was coming through school, we taught history, and they taught Arkansas history. And they had Black History Month, but I like the fact that we're teaching black history. Uh, it's a very key, important part of, of our history. This past weekend, I had an opportunity, my wife and I had an opportunity, to transport one of our amazing students. Uh, Joyce. Go ahead and go to the mic and give me.
Anibo Sue.
Absolutely off the chain, young lady. I mean, um, Ms. Rand sent me an email, basically saying she had a lot of activities, um, but she didn't have transportation. She was receiving a thousand dollar scholarship in, at one of our, from one of our organizations in Austin. And Ms. Rand said, is there anything that we can do? And then Ms. Rand picks up the phone and calls my wife. And my wife says, we're gonna take her. So we took her to Austin so she could receive this scholarship. Um, and then we left Austin and went to Houston, uh, where I stood in for another young lady, Cameron, who was receiving a scholarship there. So I guess I'm gonna be the scholarship board. Trustee, I don't know. And that, that was not even planned, but they called her name, and, uh, Dr. Harris turned and looked at me, and I just, we just made it happen, so. Um, but I wanna thank my wife, I wanna thank Ms. Rand for, uh, just having enough faith in me to even ask. And I wanna thank my wife for being who she is. I spent a lot of time away from home, and my wife truly supports me in what I do. Uh, to the point that she took off from work and she wanted to make the trip as well. And Joyce is absolutely wonderful. You know, I was kind of thinking, well, you know, she's seventeen, three hours, you know, what are we gonna talk about? She got in the vehicle, said hello, and when we got to Austin, I had to shut Joyce and my wife up. I mean, they were just, it was, it was, it was absolutely wonderful. So I wanna thank her for everything that she does for me. The choir last night was absolutely amazing. Those, those students were just, they can sing, but they are wonderful people. They are great students, and they represent us really well. I would not have any other group going that far away to represent DeSoto but them. They're absolutely amazing. Uh, I do wanna report, um, I did go to Washington DC for our annual Advocacy Institute. Um, it's that one time of year that we go and meet with our legislators and advocate for public education. If you don't know, public education is under serious, serious attack. And this trip was truly amazing because of our new administration and it, it being in the midst of, our new education secretary was, uh, being sought after in more ways than one. We were staying at the mayor at Marquee, and they had probably a hundred, a hundred and fifty protesters, because that's where we were. They wanted, I mean, they wanted, let's just say they wanted another education secretary. As we know, she is, she is now our secretary of education, and it is what it is, so we're going to continue our fight. But what happens if there's a voucher system approved? And everyone is allowed the opportunity to take their child wherever they want to take them. Of course, we all want the best for our children, so we're going to pick the best schools that are out there. What happens when all of those teachers go to those best schools, wherever they are? What happens when they are full? That little pot of money that's left, and all of these buildings that are here, what happened to those other kids? That's the basic, general concern. Every child, every child deserves the opportunity, every child has a right, it is their civil right to be given an opportunity to be educated to the best of their ability. And with that voucher system, and this is not just Don Gant talking, this, this school board members from all over the country, administrators, teachers, this is not just me. What happens if that takes place? And I'm, I'm not against private schools, I'm not against charter schools, but one of the major topics that came up is choice is there, choice has always been there. Before, you had a choice of taking your child to a private school, which you still have now. In ninety-five, the legislature approved for charter schools. You have that opportunity now. Choice is there. There is nothing wrong with public education. Public education has opportunities, just like private education has opportunities. And let me tell you, the private schools, the charter schools, they want the funding, but they don't want the accountability. I'm telling you, public education is under attack, and it is our duty to fight it. I am going to fight it to my last breath, to, until I can't see, walk, think, until I can't do anything. So if you're against public education, I'm your number-one enemy. We have got to fight for our children, we have got to fight for every single child, every single child, we've got to fight, and I'm not talking race, I'm not talking black, white, green, Hispanic, I'm not, we got to fight for every single child. That is our responsibility. There are people that paved the way for me, and if they didn't, I wouldn't be sitting here right now. Guys, we've got, we've got to fight to make sure that these kids have what they need and what they deserve. I'm, 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 I'm begging, if, if, if I thought I could get back up, I'd get on my knees. I'm begging you, please. I live, drink it, sleep it. Got in trouble on my job, because I was on a conference call, a national conference call, and the president of the company walked in, and I was on that conference call. And thank God I still got my job, because I got in trouble, not because I was on a conference call, I got in trouble because I didn't jump when he walked in. So that's a whole nother conversation, but guys, we've got to continue to fight. I'm going to fight, I'm going to continue to fight till the day I'm not on this school board, because that's what we, that's what we have to do for the children in this nation. So, Mr. President, thank you for the opportunity, and I know we usually have about two minutes, but sometimes the spirit hits you, and we, we just got to, we got to continue to fight for these kids.
That's right, thank you, Mr. Gant, thank you, Trustee Gant, Trustee Hall.
I'll keep mine short. I do want to say and echo all that's been said about the choir, those kids are great, they're fantastic, and there are so many people involved in making this happen where they're going, and they're all great, great people, I want you to know they are, I've met some of them. My biggest, one of my problems was that I didn't want to make sure they knew the language when they got there, but they said they're going to do okay. I want to also say, I visited the high school, I missed the principal, she was doing her job, and I went through, and I mean, it was quiet, I thought they were all gone, but the school was quiet, and everybody was in class, learning, and I appreciate that. And also, I think some, some that, very seldom ever get kudos, is the auto mechanic. I took my, I, I took my car up there for them to work on, and I trust them, because I've had it up there before, but they did a phenomenal job. And I got to meet some of the kids, some of the instructors, the aviation and so on. The only problem I have with, with the auto mechanics is I can't find it on the, on the website. So someone let me know where I find those things on the internet. If they're not on there, we need to get them on there, because we need more of these programs. We need woodworking, we need all kinds of welding, possibly, I don't know what all we have right now, but you know, there are some good-paying jobs out there, mechanics make a lot of money. I mean, all you got to do is take a card at one of them sometime. But you know, there are a lot of these trades that kids are making a ton of money, better living than some of us, and I, I would like to see us expand that somehow. But just let me know if I messed up, I, I may have just not found it, because I was not looking right, okay? But I, I'm, I just want to hats off to these kids up there. I actually went through the auto mechanics and saw some of the things they were doing besides the mechanics, I mean, they're inventing things up there, they rebuilt a car, they've painted it with plastic paint, and they're doing some phenomenal things up there. So hats off to them, and I hope somebody will let them know that I, for one, on this board, think they're doing a fantastic job. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Hall, Trustee Hooper.
So I'll start with the choir. I mean, I think there's only one word to describe those young people, and that's amazing. I am looking forward to hearing about their trip. Ms. Dawson and Mr. Cannon are phenomenal class leaders in terms of what they've done with their program. I was telling Dr. Harris that we need to make sure that we generate some positive press and news story around their experiences. One thing that can always be said about this board and De Soto is that we want to provide world-class experience and exposure to our kids, and I think this definitely speaks to that commitment. Had an opportunity to attend the mayor's Hard to Serve and participate on a panel, but the most significant thing about being a part of that event and being on that panel was to really get to hear from the students who participated in the event. We had a dynamic group of young men who were members of the football team, and young ladies who were members of the female leadership group. And when I tell you that they had very thoughtful and meaningful questions, it's, it's just that they always amaze me as much as how they care about this city, as well as care about their futures. And so they are to be applauded on how engaged and involved they were in that event. And again, I want to thank the mayor for having the vision to put together such an event, and I'm glad that the school district could be a partner. I got a chance to participate in the CDC's Black History Program that they had at the library, so it was a small, yet very meaningful event, but, well, actually, it wasn't the CDC, it was the library's event that hosted the CDC as well as the NAACP, and so that was a, a great event, and we got to talk a lot about historical contributions of both of those organizations. And so that was a really thoughtful program for the, for the library to put on. I also want to thank all of the campuses for their plentiful, yet meaningful, each of the campuses had black history programs, and I just want to thank them for their commitment to honoring the contributions of African-Americans to society and the continuous imprint that African-Americans continue to make on the fabric of this country. And so I'm glad to be a part of a community and a school district that celebrates that, and doesn't think that, you know, it's robbery to keep that history away from our children. And so I want to thank the administrative team for making that a priority and a commitment. And, and speaking about Joyce, Joyce and the rest of the TCU finalists, I want to keep them in our prayers, they are actually at a dinner tonight, Joyce and Caleb and McKenzie and the other, what, the other five, and then they'll be having their interviews on Wednesday. So definitely keep them prayed up. I want to thank Dr. Harris and the communications team for the very great, positive story that was done on Kimonte Yao. Many of you know that he's a young man that'll be going to, to West Point. And I say that intentionally, and that kind of goes to, to Trustee Gant's point. This is a public school providing opportunities for young people to go to some of the most prestigious academies and colleges available to anybody. And they're coming right here out of De Soto ISD, a public school that's seventy-eight percent African-American, and I say that very intentionally. In addition, I want to thank Disciple Central and Marcus King for his continual leadership in the community. I mean, he has always been a partner of this district, but you know how we always say, people that put their money where their mouth is, in terms of supporting our kids, that's something that Marcus King has done and continues to do, in terms of supporting our kids. And so it's funny that President Sherman call him, calls him De Soto pastor, but I think that there's much truth into that, when you take ownership of the community that you live in, and to try to provide as many resources as possible to all entities, especially investing in our students. So I definitely want to, want to thank him, unfortunately, he left before we got a chance to do comments, but I definitely wanted to thank him for his contributions.
Thank you, Trustee Hooper, Dr. Harris.
Just very briefly, Mayor Pro Tim, I, I really want to tell you, I appreciate you acknowledging our relationship during, during that time. And let me tell you what, I've never been in a tornado before, nor had I been in a site where it actually kind of hit, and I can remember that night driving down, I think it was Yule Road or wherever it kind of hit there, and that, it looked like a war zone. That was probably, I didn't know what I was going to see, but when I got there, it was incredible. But the incredible part was to see, you know, two cities working together to try and, and get that done for people that needed housing, you know, needed a place to stay, needed food, and it was a tremendous effort. So I really want to tell you, I really appreciate you coming out and acknowledging that, that partnership, so thank you very much, thank you very much for that, I appreciate that. Also, Mr. President and to the board, we are in spring, you know, for the most part, so there's a lot of things that goes on in spring, like is nothing else that goes on any other time, right? But we are into spring, and so please be aware of your spring calendar of, of different events that, that will be coming up as well. If you have not had an opportunity, they actually have started cutting into the road that goes into the new elementary school. If you pass by on Parkerville, you can actually see where they've started that, doing that, so if you want to drive by, you can kind of see where it actually goes in. But everyone's been very busy, there's been several committees that have been working on the, on the design of the elementary school, and it's going, going quite fast. As you know, we're on a tight time schedule to make sure that we are ahead of schedule, because we can't be doing everything come the fall of 2018. It has to be ready, everything has to be in place, furniture, technology, the whole bit must be in place prior to opening the doors, not as they were coming in, but needs to be totally in place. I will say this, I also look forward to when we can actually go out there and, and do the groundbreaking, so hopefully we'll be getting that in place real quick, where we can go and, and turn over some dirt and officially say that we're moving forward with that project. There's a lot of things going on, it's a busy time, and so I just ask that the board, please stay tuned.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. Board, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention Mr. Larry Davis will be recognized at the Capitol tomorrow for being an outstanding Texan, and so that happens tomorrow morning at a breakfast with the Black Caucus State Representatives, if I'm not mistaken, I forget the specific organization, but we should definitely acknowledge that and congratulate him when we see him for that achievement. Seeing and hearing, no further comments. Board, the time is now seven fifty-seven, and we'll call this meeting adjourned.